Okay, it is six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to the floor. This is the administrative appeal brought to from Harold McQuinn and Freshwater Stone. So we'll lift them stat first and then we'll switch over to whoever's gonna be next probably from Yeah, I'll get to that. Do you have the, do you have the listen? The listeners in the paper?
It was published in the I of there. On June twenty seventh and then the letters notices were sent out on June twentieth.
Okay, awesome. And the administrative appeal is was for an error made in the denial of the permit and it was in the section of the town ordinance on the quarrying license ordinance. So who would like to start? And if you could state your name, so let me.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patrick Lyons. I'm attorney at the law firm E P Buddy. I practice out of our Ellsworth office where I reside. I'm here tonight representing McQuinn and Freshwater Stone and their appeal of the planning board's decision from April third, twenty twenty four. I only recently became counsel for Freshwater and Harold Quinn, and I know a lot of you I know a lot of you I don't wanna get in the way of proper procedure. But I know a lot of you have been doing this for a decade. And but however, I believe I can offer fresh perspective here tonight and as that I provided in my memorandum to the board. Granite has been extracted in Hall Quarry since the nineteenth century. Indeed, the quarry's namesake, the quarry is the namesake for the village of Paul Quarry. Granite extracted from this area can be found throughout our community and throughout the country. Famous pink stone is coveted and highly valued. In twenty twelve, the town extracted, enacted a moratorium on mineral extraction because of McQuinn's ongoing pouring activity. The town then embarked on robust process that led to the development of the quarrying license ordinance. The stated purpose of the ordinance was and remains, quote, to put into law minimum removal and reclamation standards in municipal procedures to regulate the pouring of rock or stone, while at the same time respecting the rights of pre-existing operations. McQuinn is a pre-existing operation. It submitted its application and complied with the ordinance in twenty fourteen after the ordinance enacted. Twenty fourteen. This matter has been for the town for a decade. In that time, the planning board has held approximately thirty meetings where the project opponents have had ample opportunity to present argument against the project, including hiring three different, very capable law firms with arguments that their own, in addition to arguments from their own sound experts and their own school mother experts. Throughout this process, McQuinn has listened to the town and opponents and agreed to numerous insignificant concessions, including limits on hours of operation, limiting their operations to a limited number of days per year, not operating in the summer months, along with the use of noise mitigation technologies supported by the town's own expert, limiting the number of trucks that go to the site each day, agreeing not to use blasting in addition to buffering and the property line setback. During this long and drawn-out process, the planning board has determined McQuinn's compliance with all applicable performance standards of the quarrying license operation ordinance. Despite this, the planning board has twice denied McQuinn's application on matters unrelated to the performance standards. This this board upheld both those decisions. However, on both occasions, the Superior Court has ruled against the planning board and remanded this matter back to the town. Now, for a third time, the planning board has denied McQuinn's application on a matter unrelated to the performance standards of this ordinance. I'm here tonight to ask you not to make the same mistake in upholding the planning board's decision for a third time. The major issue here before you tonight, as I'm sure you're well aware, is the easement. Following the court's last remand in January of twenty twenty four, McQuinn was has obtained an easement amendment for access to the quarry. While McQuinn disagrees with the planning board's decision that the previous easement lacked sufficient right title and interest, in excess of caution and obtained an amended easement, it makes clear that McQuinn has unfettered access to the property and is allowed to perform maintenance and improvements. The easement amendment was duly reported with the Hancock County Registry of Deeds. However, on remand, the planning board refused to even consider the newly relocated, the newly reported easement and instead determined that the easement, as it existed in twenty twenty one, lacked sufficient right title and interest. And that's the easement that's been just, you know, reviewed and is before you on appeal. Main case law makes clear that a reported easement is not subject to relatable, to reasonable dispute and can be considered by an administrative board without the need to further open the record. This is the type of information that the planning board should have welcomed into evidence and considered enacting on the court's remand. Indeed, the lane case from the main Supreme Court concluded that a pulling concluded after upholding a planning board's decision to allow, following a remand, an applicant to submit new evidence without allowing additional public comment, quote, administrative board needs to strive a fair and reasonable balance between the interests, efficiency, and the public's right to speak. And in view of the extensive hearings and deliberations conducted in this case, that balance is properly struck in this instance. Right title and interest RTI is a threshold issue that should have been addressed at the outset of the application process. However, only after six years of review, where the planning board went through the entire permit application and found compliance with all performance standards, did the opponents convince the planning board to take up this threshold issue. It was then that the planning board impermissively and unnecessarily weighted into the interpretation of the easement in contemplation of hypothetical future disputes that might or might not arise between McQuinn and the easement grantor. It's not the planning board's role to entertain and evaluate such hypotheticals. Indeed, the business court noted in its remand order that, quote, "A provision that requires owner consent, which may not be unreasonably held, does not automatically mean maintenance of the road would be impractical." Likewise, the court held, quote, "The mere potential of a dispute between the easement holder and the property holder in the future could apply to all types of easements that are routinely used to develop property." This matter has gone on for ten years, countless meetings, lawyers, experts, and two court remandments. The planning board should have considered this new easement without the need to reopen the record for any further. Refusing any consideration of the twenty twenty four easement amendment violated principles of due process severely prejudiced McQuinn's. The business court's order on remand does not limit the planning board's ability to consider the amendment, the amended easement. Indeed, the order makes clear, quote, "If the planning board changes its conclusion concerning RTI, then it will need to address the remaining issue for approval." Nowhere does the decision say the planning board cannot consider this information. The opponent suggests that McQuinn should start over and submit a new application. Further delaying the process has taken ten years. In large part due to the opponent's own efforts to kill this application. Their arguments in essence is in essence that although we have in large part caused the process to take ten years, if it were to take any longer, it would be unfair to them. Tonight, McQuinn respectfully requests the board to remand this matter back to the planning board to consider the twenty twenty four easement amendment and then address any remaining criteria for approval. Fairness in due process demand that this demand is reorganized in this long existing quarry. Thank you. And then just a few things for the record, Roger, board. The issue of the emails in the record, yes, I don't know. I just, I know that was issued. We wanted to address. I don't know when we want to do that as far as whether or not the board will consider them. And also, I just would like to raise an objection for the record, with large part procedurally, that there's only three members here tonight.
We only have five people on the board.
No, I feel it as a procedural matter, and I thank you all for your service here.
It doesn't sound like the email that it didn't get much traction, so unless.
Right. But we haven't discussed it.
There was, maybe you explain why the
Yeah, so in the record, we submitted to the Board of Appeals, there was an email exchange between myself, the planning board's attorney, attorneys Rayback and Pelegi, and then the planning board chair was copied where we raised, I raised the arguments regarding whether or not the easement amendment should be, you know, considered. I submitted that because I believe it to be part of the record and part because the planning board chair was copied on it. I think, I don't think it's dispositive or of anything here tonight, but we did submit it and would like it to be
As evidenced, you did submit the twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Honestly, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any objection from from you all to include those items in the?
I have no, this is Daniel Pelegi, I represent Butters to the, to the development side. I don't object to the fact that it was included as evidence that was submitted to the local planning board's council for whatever that's worth. It wasn't part of the planning board's record. It was not something considered by the board.
Yeah, I don't, I was like, things, you know, being sent to the town, I think that's more of the town's decision on what they're gonna accept. I was, that's not part of the zoning board here. That's that's more for the planning board or the, you know, something that the town attorneys can discuss.
That's made my request and thank you.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any anyone else that wants to speak on this matter? If you could, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Brian Rayback. I'm a land use lawyer with Pierce Sadwood. I'm here representing tonight the Hall of Quarry neighbors group. You might think with all the lawyering going on here, all the lawyers in the room, all the ten years of material, that this is complicated. In fact, and despite the long brief that I wrote for you, I think it's actually pretty simple. This is the same basic decision from the planning board that the applicant lacks title writer interest because it can't be sure that it can maintain the road that you affirmed last time. Only this time, the planning board explained why and cited two specific evidence in the record. Because you affirmed the first version, we respectfully suggest and request that you should now affirm the new and improved second version from the planning board. So as I expect you may know, when that first decision was appealed to court, the court said there wasn't enough explanation in it to understand why the planning board decided the applicant can't finish the work, namely the road. So the court sent it back to the planning board, what we call a remand, saying in essence, explain yourselves, please. Tell me more about why you decided what you did. What it actually said was, make findings of fact adequate for judicial review, but that's legalese for explain yourselves, please. So the planning board went back and they explained, they added supplemental findings to A, B, C, D, and E, each with citations to evidence in the record that it found persuasive. In short, it found the road will have heavy equipment on it. That came straight out of the application material. That's going to damage the road. This will impact both the quarry and the neighbors who use the road. That damage will need to be repaired. Likewise, given some recent storms, the planning board said, we know that roads are susceptible to damage during heavy storms, for example, washouts from ever increasing, you know, climate change and problems with with storms that that were happening these days. That kind of damage will also need to be repaired. The planning board then said, even though the road design changed during the process, the stormwater model or management plan proposed by the applicant did not change. So that could lead to still more stormwater problems. There could be, for example, ponding on the Mucetti land. Mucetti is the individual who granted the easement for this road. There could be water pounding on his land because of the road. There could be more freezing and thawing impacts to the road. The planning board in each case noted that the applicant applicant is going to need Mr. Mucetti's consent to make the repair. Although the easement says that consent can't be withheld unreasonably, Mucetti clearly negotiated it because he thought there might be times when he would withhold consent. He must have thought that. The fact that consent is required, to me, logically means that there must be times when it can be denied. From there, the planning board concluded that the easement is too conditional, too qualified to guarantee the maintenance required under the quarry ordinance because it was subject to somebody else's approval. Thus, it concluded, the applicant doesn't have all the rights it needs to develop and operate the project. In our view, that's not a very surprising result. We think in their heart of hearts that they were being honest with us, you know, to them. I don't want to say that they're being dishonest, but we think in their heart of hearts, the applicants recognize that. That's why they went out and tried to get the new easement to fix that problem. The problem is that new easement came after the court's decision. It came more than a year after the planning board had closed the record to to any new evidence. And it's insufficient. The planning board looked at it and said, we're not gonna take, we're not gonna consider that. They did that with the advice of their counsel. You don't get a do-over. That's what this is. It's a, it's an attempt to have a second bite at the apple. It was filed late. The court had said the planning board only needs to make findings of fact adequate for judicial review, not reopen the record, allow still more changes to the project here from the public, and then tease through the several photographs of legalese that are in that easement to figure out what it means. The court's order didn't require any of that. Rather, again, with the advice of counsel, the planning board used reasonable judgment to say, look, ten years of wrangling over this thing is enough. The application was complete. And eventually, we need to be able to move on as a community, both up or down on a project. We can't have endless revisions to an application. And and that's what this is, right? It's continuing to revise this application. So we think that was reasonable. The proceedings can't go on forever until the applicant gets what it wants. Eventually, you have to decide. Plus, the new easement was was late. It was obtained only after the court identified the issue. And to be fair, the planning board knew it would need to hold another hearing or hearings with more argument, more evidence, more lawyers to figure out if this new easement were finally enough. They didn't have to do all of that. It was enough simply to do what the court directed by better explaining why they had already denied the application. We asked that you take the same approach. These issues of, do we look at the new evidence? Is that adequate? Should we talk about whether subdivision standards apply? What kind of standards does the road have to meet? All of that is a red herring. It's not relevant if what you're doing today is saying, did the planning board get their decision right? If the answer is yes, you don't need to reach any of that. The standard here is for you guys anyways. The standard is that the decision can't be contrary to a specific provision of the ordinance. So if you answer the question to yourselves that the planning board's decision was not contrary to the right title and interest provision of the ordinance, that's the end of it. And that's why we think it's a pretty simple decision. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I understand Dan Pelegi has a presentation as well.
Dan.
Thank you. Good evening. Daniel Pelegi, I think I've met everybody before. I represent Simo Butters, Jerry and Laurie Shankovitz, and Jan Coats, represent Peter and Judy Allen as well, but they have moved. They don't live in Hall Quarry anymore. I'm gonna talk less than everybody else, I promise. So some of you who know me know that I did, I've done trial work for a whole bunch of years and part of that stuff was that I did was a lot of criminal defense. One thing that I can tell you is that a convicted, someone convicted in a criminal trial cannot return to court one to two years after a judgment with newly created evidence and ask the trial court to take notice of it and overturn the conviction. Doesn't happen. It can't happen. Might be grounds in some extraordinary circumstances for a new trial. We open everything, all of the evidence, which we did on the application, but you can't do what the, what the applicants are asking you to do here. There is nothing in the quarrying license ordinance that allows the planning board record to be reopened for for new evidence after a permit has been denied. And that's exactly what we're doing here, and that's exactly what the applicant's asking you to do. It's true, it's a long process. I think that Mr. Lyons, probably since he wasn't involved, doesn't isn't as familiar with the history. This project included several iterations of a plan, started as six acres, then it got modified, not by opponents, not by neighbors, but by the applicants. Part of the reason took so long. But what happened that we know is that the evidence closed in December of twenty twenty two, closed, done. We couldn't submit anything. They couldn't submit anything. Anyone made a decision. They denied the permit based in part on quarry license ordinance section six two eight two, which is a review standard. And this board, we were before you before and you found the planning that did its job, then went to Superior Court. The Superior Court was in the middle of analyzing all of the same stuff and said, wait a minute, we need more. We need to understand the planning board's thinking a little bit more on this issue of the right to to maintain the access road. And we're gonna send it back to the planning board for a limited purpose. Make some more findings of fact for us, and let's see where we are. The planning board did exactly that. They reviewed the evidence and they made findings, and not only they made findings, but they supported those findings by specific record evidence. They went back to the minutes in some cases and submissions in other cases and pointed to them to, we made this finding of fact, and here's how we supported it. And the one thing we didn't hear tonight and we didn't see in the applicant's submission is anything challenging the fact that that evidence exists in the record and that the planning board found it and couldn't lie to it. They didn't say that. Because the planning board can't, frankly, that is the analogy. Did the planning board act criminally contrary to the ordinance? The planning board did exactly what the ordinance required, and it did exactly what the court asked them to do, and they tied it to evidence in the record. The law court, for what it's worth, has never once held that a planning board was required to admit new evidence after a final permit action, never once. And they don't have to. After the fact, the twenty twenty four evidence is hardly relevant to a permit that got denied and wanted to turn it to the planning board ready to found that, but ask it to uphold the planning board's rule. Thank you.
Any questions? You don't? Well, I guess what I'm, so when we upheld it and went back to the planning board and they, because basically we were, everybody was kind of, it was vague on what the easement was saying. But I was like, who actually had control over what's going on? I was like, maintenance stuff. So in between that time, the easement was modified?
Respectfully, easement was modified in March of this year.
Of this year.
Just a couple, three months ago.
That's what I'm trying to kind of piece together.
Well, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be here for all parties if it got right the first time. I don't quite agree with you because I don't see the planning board addressing what the court asked other than, you know, coming up with with more hypotheticals that as the court said, you know, this is my problem. This is if you apply, if you apply these standards to a vague right away, but nothing at all, if it doesn't say, I mean, this is a, this is an easement written in twenty twenty sometime in recent years compared to an easement written fifty years ago that doesn't expressly say that you could do this. You'd have the same problem. The court hits it on the nail and that nothing would ever be approved again on a private right of way for any use. Because you could come up with this and you could, if we apply the standards to other things, I mean, if you want to apply the, if you want to take to the extreme to say like, well, six parking spaces, but everyone drives duck drive. So that's inadequate. I mean, I stressed this last night. I just, I know the frustration on both parties, but we somewhere we we left common sense behind and we didn't deliberate on common sense among the board as opposed to getting into the weeds legally, so. Guess I need some guidance on not on what the I doesn't read to me that the planning board addressed what the court asked them to do, which is to say, and and the elephant drum to me is is nothing here says like, you know, why I I read the finding in facts, but nothing explains to me who in their right mind would repair a road? And maybe that's a good thing. You go out, repair the road quickly. It's, you know, they've got, obviously, but Quinn knows how to repair, repair roads. So, you know, the the idea that this is gonna be fallen to neglect or that the property owner is going to just play hardball and 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 make a bad situation worse, to me, doesn't pass the common sense test. So I, but I mean, ten years and this has all been you know, the extremes been taken probably in both directions. But I I thought the court asked them that the is on their right, to clarify the 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 right title and interest and, you know, this is, this is just more hypotheticals. Whereas, you know, as I say, when you're court doctrine about the the mere potential is bringing it back to common sense to say, this is what happens every day. Say why?
Well, I I think that board has done exactly what the higher up people told them to do. I think they actually did a better job clarifying. I was kind of but they were a little loose in the beginning when we first reviewed it. The fact of the matter is the applicant doesn't have an, I guess, ways unencumbered right away. There's, and there's a reason, there's gotta be a reason, Mr. Mucetti. They have been back to him twice to
But there's nothing in the record. It's not for us to speculate on on those matters because there's nothing in the record as to why he did or did not.
Right, but he must, you have to also I think use common sense. There's a reason why he wants to maintain control of that road and I don't know what he's thinking and neither do you.
I I don't, but
and I know you didn't agree before, but I agreed with the planning board and I I really haven't seen anything. They have done what the law court has asked, and whether the law court accepts what they've put in is up to the law court and I I don't feel that it's up to us to It's up to us to. I don't know, I, I just agree that they've done what the court has asked, and to me, that's what their appeal is about. No, nothing to do with anything else. Well, also, I mean, when it was being manded back to them, it was, was what the, the permit. That, what they had presented before, was what they wanted clarification on. Which was, had nothing to do with like new evidence.
Right.
So, I guess that's the path that. You know, I have what issue, because I know they've. You know, things have been changed since then, but this is what they had to work with. So I, I mean, I, I feel. That it's. As the plan would, what they. Head to, you know. What was presented in front of them is, is. That they did a sufficient job at what they had them.
Agreed.
And I can't use common sense, because when you talk to laws, that just goes off the one dash.
Well, I'm going back to, to, to enable meaningful and proper judicial review. Uh, so I'm, I'm looking at the, looking at the findings and going like. I, I, I got to the meetings, but you know, apparently the, the planning board is, is presenting that they have experienced with road maintenance. I, uh, I, what was presented i- in terms of the planning was experience with road maintenance. Anything?
Definitely, I don't go down.
You know, so that, that's. Seems kind of odd with that in there, and, and, you know, we don't have a, uh, uh, you know, this is based on. Take it as well, but this is based on, you know, something that might happen. In the future, based on what they're saying is, you know, appears to be increasing. Um. Again, if you, if you apply these things to parking, to, to, uh, to the electric grid. Do anything, I mean, we've never, we've never taken this, taken the bar for, uh. For a- anything similar to this level, so it's really, you know. My concern is that, are, you know, the entire town is looking at this saying like, we're reaching instead of coming to compromise.
Well, I don't think they've said anything different than what they've said before. They're just. Putting more words. And, uh.
You think that, you, you think findings two C, two D are, are just, uh, I, I don't have the part, do we have, you know, our prior life?
Uh, they've, they've done what the law court asking to do, which is provide more information. Uh. We agreed for with less information.
Well, we didn't, we didn't.
We didn't all agree, that's, that's true. But it passed the appeals.
And, and we're back here again, so.
And I suspect that we'll be back here again.
But, but that's, it's, it's not, you know. So I, I. It's not right, just fine, it became resolved.
Well. I'm not funny, I'm ma- making a decision.
Uh, you want to bring up motion, huh? It, it would, it would seem unlikely that this will be, be back to you, but, um.
With, with, stating your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Roger Huber, I'm. Just here at your, uh, as, as, uh, uh, as counsel to the, the board, um, the, the. The Superior Court. Said there wasn't enough information for it, for, for judicial review. And it asked the planning board to provide that additional. You know, why did you do what you did, and point to the record and show where there's some support, where there's evidence in the record to support. Why you did what you did. Once it, once it gets beyond this stage, should they elect to appeal, it'll go to the court and the court will make a decision. On, on that issue, it seems unlikely to me that, that this band will get back together on this particular issue.
Yeah. No, it has been.
Unless, unless it goes, unless it continues on as a, as a new application, or, you know, something else here, understood, okay.
But you, you may be ten years out from that.
That's the for all parties, let's, let's hope not.
But your comments are, your, your comments are spot on, and, and. But at the planning board level. Um, I mean, I, I would hope that the issues that you've raised tonight, and the issues that you raised last time. Um, were issues that were raised and discussed at the planning board level. Um, the, the fact is, the planning board made a decision. And this board last time was tasked with finding whether that. Decision was clearly contrary to the ordinance, this board said. It was not clearly contrary, I, I know you disagreed with that, um. A- as Mr. Rayback said, this decision then went up to Superior Court, and this Superior Court basically said, just tell us what you did, um. They, they really didn't make any. Any substantive decisions.
Not decision, but, but I am reading the, the entire, the tag ruling, which has, you know, does give to me. A lot of guidance on, on where they whiffed, you know.
Yeah.
But my, I think my issue is, is that. If they weren't allowed to introduce anything. New and they were working off from the. The application that they had. Um, so anything after that point is kind of a moot point, unless they are reapplying at some point. Were they much, you know, stronger?
The, the court didn't say that they can't, they said they don't have to.
Right.
There's opportunity here to say, you know. You know, rather, rather than using the calendar, it's just frustrating, and some, some of this stuff came to me very like, so I didn't say like, you know, too late, didn't read it.
Uh, and, and just so the board note, I mean, the issue is, is, is the planning board's decision. Of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, clearly contrary. To the provisions of the quarry license ordinance, but that, that is the narrow. Issue. Last time it found that it was not clearly contrary. The planning board really hasn't done anything different except bolster that decision, um. With, with citations to the, uh, to the record and further explanation as to why.
Oh, I understand that, if you interpret that way, but you, the, the other way to look at it is, is that they, the planning board, uh. Well, I, I won't give.
Whiffed twice, whiffed twice.
Beyond, beyond that, is, is what they, uh, um. It's, it's a matter of, of, of being myopic to get to an end, so. Um. I've said my case.
Yes, well, let's see, that's what I'm coming back to as the whole, if they. I mean, what they had here in their findings. Um. It doesn't say a lot. Um, but they're just going by. What they had for the, it's basically the original easement. And that. That's what they're based on all that office, that first easement that they have, and that easement was pretty vague. So that's why we had the. In our last meeting, um. We saw. There was some issue with, in the wording of that, um. But that's. I guess what I'm looking at is like, if that's what they have to work with. Just that one document, and because that's what they were instructed to do, was to review that, no, not review it, but to. To. Give more, yeah, yeah, um, backup. With the facts and findings on that, um. I, I guess I'm leaning towards if they. They did their job, so I think. At some point, we're gonna have to. Come up with a motion, you know, so then we can discuss it. And start the process.
Would you like me to s- state a proposal?
I know, I want, I want one of these guys.
I'll make a motion that we deny the appeal, we, um.
Oh, that's simple.
I, I'm voting against, but my, I, I read, in terms of our sculptor story, I read the entire paragraph. I don't just read the clearly contrary part.
Right.
And, and, and specific. Con- contrary to specific provisions. And allows us to, you know, allows us to reprove the arguments and, and are they including the. The context of whether the, you know, whether they were too specific with their provisions. Which is, you know, which I mean, like, holding a, holding a bar to. One party, but not to everyone, and I, I sympathize with all parties, that's why I just like to see things done. Across the board, fair, down the middle of the road.
Okay, how should we, how should I state my motion?
Well, you, you're gonna have to make an, a motion, then we're gonna have to get seconded. And no matter what, with only three of us on the board, we all have to vote in favor or. Against that motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, there's only, there's only three of us on the board.
The, the, the appeal will fail if there's not, not three. Uh, it, a motion requires at least three to pass. And, and, and appeal granting the motion, appeal. If it doesn't have three, will fail, and, and that'll be the end of the. That, that'll be the end of the inquiry. Anybody to say, any attorneys disagree with that?
No.
It'd be nice to have three people, three of you voting, um.
To deny the appeal, or to.
Whatever the.
Whatever the motion is.
Whatever the motion is.
If you, if you make a motion to deny it. Or, yeah, then. If you don't get three votes, then.
That, that, no, 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 that's all right. The most important, just in order for the appellate to sustain its burden of proof. They require three votes in favor of the appeal to deny, to, to, to overturn the planning board. Any other vote that you make denies this appeal, that is correct. That, that, where, where do we find that?
Uh, it's in your reorganization.
Yeah.
Uh. Rec. It said voting shall be determined by simple majority of those present at any meeting, except that at least three votes. Are required for passage of any motion.
So I could make a, a.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I get it, okay.
I could make the motion to accept the appeal. And then vote against it later on, and that would kill, is that correct?
Uh, you can make a motion to. Grant the appeal.
Yeah.
It'd be better if you. You, you could do that.
Or I could make a motion to deny the appeal, and if that. Bails.
Correct.
Then that's the end of it.
Correct.
So no matter how.
In order for the appellate to prevail, there have to be three votes in their favor.
In my favor, yeah.
Anything else is gonna be a denial, okay?
So I probably make. I would make it, um, the denial. I would probably make it in the. To uphold the appeal. And then with, we don't get three votes, and then it's denied automatically.
Or I can, I could abstain.
Well, no matter what we would have, we would have to have three votes.
By abstaining, the recommendation goes back to the planning board to, to reconsider, uh.
This is not going back to the planning.
Yeah.
At any, it, no matter what this board does, it is not going back to the planning board, it is, it will go to Superior Court. And Superior Court will review the planning board's decision.
Correct.
I, I, I misread that, I, I, I. Judge step up. On the court's, you know, answer.
Yeah, yes. So I'll make a motion that we deny the appeal. Of Powell McQuinn. Incorporated. From freshwater stone and brickwork incorporated. To deny their appeal to the. Planning board's decision of whatever the date is. Um, there's.
May, day second?
Uh, where. Date is since, is April third, but that's. I mean, uh, that was her.
The written decision was issued on May twenty-seventh.
May, May twenty-second, then. Do we have second?
Yes. I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain, because I, you know, I, I can't. If, to, to, to go along either way. Uh. Without having the entire, but i- if these are. Two Cs in addition to something else, I can't, uh. It, it's just too much, uh. Too much paperwork to, to. Properly reconcile, so it's more, more complicated than I'd say. I, I, you know, if there's a, if there's a finding two, and we're looking at two C, I have not read, gone back to read finding two. Okay. Well. So not being, not being sure either way, not being fully, uh, um, you know, some of this stuff is coming in. Um, coming into last, some of it we had, but, you know, I tried to keep up with, with what, uh. Or what else we had, but, you know, going back to. Several years back, I'm talking about, we do.
Yes, you have a rehearing with all five members.
Some of the board members on, at hearing. Um.
Is that good?
I'll second it. You're on the chair. I was hoping somebody else.
Do you want to read back that motion, just so? Or what you have, so that we can clean it up and see?
Mr. Bright moved that they've ordered, uh, appeals deny the appeal of Harold McQuinn and Freshwater Stone, uh, and, uh, based on, uh. Uh. In relationship to the planning board decision, uh, findings of facts and conclusion of law dated May twenty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Any further discussion? No?
Just i- i- in any event that I get to write the decision. Um, I, I, I assume this is, is. Th- this is, is based on a. Finding that. The planning board's decision is not clearly contr- contrary. To specific provisions in the ordinance.
That's how I'm, right now. Robert. Um. He said we vote all in favor. Say aye. Or aye. And we had one abstained. Or all opposed, in a vote. So, yeah. So this does not carry, so. With a board of three thousand.
My suggestion is to follow that up with a conference motion, and have a vote in that, if there's not a three person. Uh, that's a, then it's an effective.
They can't pass any papers about it. Pass, you, you think there ought to be a motion that, that in the affirmative?
Well, so, well, yeah, the, yeah, I understand what Dan's saying, so that, that if. We all can't agree on this, then we, we can at least vote on that, that we cannot. There's no clear decision by the board. So then let's say. I guess the permit would be denied, and, I mean, like, appeal would be denied anyway.
Oh, we could schedule another meeting and have chance to review, review further.
Well, if we can't, yeah, if we can't get a.
It's gonna change.
Yeah, the meeting's now, that's the problem, so, um. You want to buy my case?
Does to. Accept the applicant?
No, um. That the board cannot reach a conclusive decision, well, unanimous vote on it.
That the board cannot reach a conclusive decision, well, unanimous vote on it with three board members. Um, that's. That the. Yeah. It's it's going to be denied. With. Lot of conclusive vote between us all.
Well, I I I think that's going to be the evident, I I think that's going to be the the outcome. I I I thought the request was to make a motion. That one was styled in the, uh, was a motion to deny the appeal. Make a caller and grant the appeal.
Mine was more of the, of a. Make a motion, yeah, so that we can vote, that we cannot reach a decision. To have three votes.
That's just complicated, why?
Yeah.
Why not just say, take a motion to accept the appeal? And then do not, then we won't get a call. No.
But however, that's, you know, the best way to, you know, to be worded, I'm just. Running the world around the home.
Um, I I would recommend and recommend a motion to grant the appeal, that one was usually.
I'll do that.
Same language, motion to grant the appeal.
Yeah.
Um. To to grant the appeal of of Earl McQuinn and freshwater stone. Um. Uh. In in connection with the planning board's decision of May twenty four, twenty two, twenty twenty four.
Yeah. They'll move. I second it. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed, man?
May.
May. Works, and one abstained. So that's it. But margin of.
What's that?
Motion was passed.
Appeals denied because there was no motion that passed, correct?
Right. So there we are. And so. We should have. Our findings and facts of that, or just to.
I I can grab up a very simple set of findings and facts for you to review.
Okay, and then we can. Come on inside.
Yep. Back to the room inside, yeah, is is there? Ten years, twelve years, um, is there anything else you think this board should do? This is the time to do it.
From the buyer's perspective, I don't think there's anything else that the board can do.
No, no, I I don't. I mean, in order to keep things clean, so that, I I mean, this decision is not going to be reviewed by the spirit court, but um. I mean, they're reviewing the planning board's decision, not not this board's.
It's it's. Now the record is clear that there are not three votes in favor of any motion.
Correct.
Okay, so so it can be from my perspective, that takes, that cleans up the record, I think we need at least that something to go forward. With, it's a denial of applicant didn't mean it's for the proof. Um, and they can go forward or not. Basically, I I'm happy, satisfied with what the board is trying, at least. In terms of. Finalizing the record.
Patrick, I'm sure you're not happy with the result, but in terms of the process.
Yeah, there's not, we don't have anything further that.
Okay.
Okay, so then, um. Yes, we can. Join the meeting, if we have a. Motion.
Motion rejoin. That's it?
Yep. I'm started.
Well, all in favor? That is, all in favor. Oh, now we finally get three votes. Read that at the side.